Call me in the morning, please stand for pledge. Okay, you can get the motion to accept the minutes of March 16th.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The motion to accept the finance report and payment of the bills.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Couple amendments, Steve?
Yes, I have two budget amendments. First one, budget amendment number 2011 dash 015. We recognize $724 in taxation advertising revenue for advertising that we recognize received from the petitioner for the cost of advertising.
Okay. Motion to accept budget amendment 2011 dash 015.
I'll make a motion to accept budget amendment number 211 dash 015.
My second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
The second budget amendment is 2011 dash 016. We recognize $4,594 in fire rescue and ambulance revenue from the county. That is forwarded to the William M. Searley steam fire engine.
Okay, I have a motion to accept budget amendment 2011 dash 016. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, the safety award presentation for John Burpee will not be here due to schedule conflict, so he will present that to us at our next board meeting. So seven, Trent?
They're on here.
Did I have you there? Oh, that's right, okay. All righty.
Can you go back to that safety award and give a summary of that? Because I don't know if everybody's familiar with that. I know we received some information, Lois, so what are we talking about specifically with the IWIF safety award presentation?
The, um, John Burpee company is involved in it because they're the broker for the Iowa, uh, participate Iowa, and the town would see the award for outstanding commitment to workplace safety. And that's based on the number of workers' compensation claims that we have over a period of time which is commendable by the town for having such low claims. That's, that's why the award is presented to the town.
And how does John play a role in this?
He essentially acts as broker for the, for us, teach all his policy. That's why he's involved in it.
Any other questions?
That's it, thank you.
Seven, Trent. Okay, University of Maryland Extension?
Good evening. My name is Victoria Stone, and I represent the University of Maryland Extension for Age Youth Development. And I was here about a year ago. We went for a grant. Okay. Um, we went for a grant about a year ago, and we asked for your support. We did not receive that grant, but we kept it up, and we received a grant for the community of Elton Housing Authority in the sum of $13,870. And this grant will go to fund a technology lab at both communities. It's going to be a mobile technology lab. And I volunteered at these communities since I was 11 years old. And I've always wanted to provide a technology lab because I feel that they need one, so we are able to do that. And I just ask for your support, trying to get mentors and spreading the word, because it is a mentoring program, and it's not just there for use, for free lab use. We're hoping to offer, in conjunction with Cecil College, some classes on English, math, introduction to computers for non-credit purposes. And, and I just hope that this will actually make the community look a little better in the county and the state's eyes. My mom works for the Elton Housing Authority, and she really strives to make it a better place. And I'm hoping that with the computer, computer lab, we can create a countywide magazine. It's a hope with the funds that will better, will better the community and hopefully our county.
So the technology lab will be housed where?
It'll be housed at Rudy Park or Windsor Village, depending on the day. It'll consist of 10 laptop computers, two projectors, three printers, and some miscellaneous web cameras and whatnot, so.
That's good. So are you looking for another grant support request, or what do you?
No, I just, I just want to keep you guys informed that we followed through, and we're going to get it done. And I want you to expect an invitation, a tour, once it's, once it's complete.
Very good. Excellent. Excellent. Very good job.
I have one question. Are you going to be looking for volunteers to actually do this? Are you going to be making a schedule or something?
Absolutely.
You could send us if you have, if we know of someone who would like to volunteer?
Absolutely. It's in conjunction with the Office of Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention. I always have to, have to say that. So we're actually looking to reach 60 youth, which if you've been in those communities, you'll know that that'll be quite easy. But we also will need 15 mentors. And they can be mentors within the community or mentors around the county. And I'm hoping to get mentors around the county to bring some people into the community to understand how the community functions. And when I say community, I mean both communities. And we're hoping that each mentor will give at least 15 hours of service throughout the year. And this funding lasts until March, next March, so March 2012.
So we have, we have an opportunity to maybe get another grant?
Yes, absolutely. It's supposed to be a continued funding, but in, in the times that we are in, I'm hoping that it does. But we actually received two supporting grants, an Adobe Youth Voices grant, which will give us 25 site license, 25 computer licenses for Premiere Photoshop and a couple of other, I guess, technology things. And we also received another supporting grant, Engaging Youth Serving the Community, which will serve as the money source for a family night out event for the community, so.
Very good. Great job.
Thank you.
And certainly, it should be very accommodating to both youth at either location, because there's plenty.
Yes, there's plenty. Not, not enough mentors, but we're hoping to get some.
Okay, very good.
I heard, I heard your presentation before, of course. And I just want to thank you again for being quite modest. I know that took a lot of work and a lot of grant writing and proposals and everything, and you just persevered on and got that for the community. That's very important that you did that, and we greatly, greatly appreciate that.
Well, I hope, I hope it makes a difference.
It definitely will.
It will, definitely.
Thank you.
Need more people like you to really get out there and do things.
Thank you. I learned from the best, my mom.
That's right. Okay, Louis?
Okay, first item I have is a Clinton Gunderson recommendation. The town, as the mayor adventure, we're well aware that Clinton Gunderson has been doing our audit for three years. Under, under the last contract. Under the last contract for three years. And pursuant to the test we've had with Clinton Gunderson, Mr. Regal contacted them and asked them to submit a proposal to provide those services, including the audit and the cap review for the next three years, the fiscal 11th and 13th. And they've submitted a total, and the total for the audit and cap review would be $39,075 for 2011, $40,125 for 2012, and $41,400 for 2013. They, they submitted a proposal for a single audit, but I don't think we'll qualify for any single audit services because $500,000, I'm sorry, federal, federal money. So, so I am, Mr. Regal, recommend that the town accepts Clinton Gunderson's proposal and a three-year contract for auditing services and cap review.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Or do we have a motion to accept the three-year contract with them?
I will make a motion to accept the three-year contract.
Do you have a second?
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Second item I have is introduction ordinance two, 2011. The town currently provides that the major facilities is collected at the time the building permit is issued, subsequent to a workshop that the town had and some other discussions on the matter, was given some direction to prepare an ordinance that provides that a developer or a person seeking a new construction permit should be able to pay 25% of the major facility fee, and, which is $15,000 for ordinance order. And then we collect the balance, 75%, at the time a construction, I mean, certificate of occupancy would be issued. This allows, softens the upfront cost for development in the town of Elton. This ordinance is amendment to chapter 13.204 and provides, I'll put, I'll put down a little, read into the record and what's provided here. Under the section, major facility charges, the charge is still $15,000, but for new construction, 25% required at the time of the building permit, 75% would be required to pay this certificate of occupancy. For existing construction, it would be 100% would be required. In addition to the major facility charges, for new construction, 25% of the punctual assessment charges will be charged, 75% will be collected at the balance. Punctual assessment charges are when property lies or is contiguous and adjoining to infrastructure within the town, and when the property is developed, the cost of that infrastructure is recovered by the town and put into the major facility fund. I would recommend that we would accept the ordinance two that 2011 for introduction.
Okay, you have a motion to accept ordinance two dash 211 for introduction purposes only. So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Um.
Motion carried.
I did have a little discussion.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Um, Louis, is there ever a situation to where there is an existing property that would undergo what I would call, maybe call a major renovation and require or want another hookup? And could we treat that the same way? Could they do a 25% during that process and then receive, once they receive a C of O of that major renovation, pay the rest?
This, this particular ordinance, as a subject of introduction, might not include major renovation of existing property to be granted those percentages. To answer your question, the answer is no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next.
Next item I have is proclamation. I'll read into the record, fair housing. The town of Elton is proud to join the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and celebrating the 30th anniversary of Civil Rights Act of 1968, which is referred to as the Fair Housing Act. And whereas the 1968 Civil Rights Act guarantees the right of all Americans to fair and equitable housing, prohibiting discrimination concerning the sale, rental, and planning of housing based on race, religion, and national origin, and was later amended, additionally prohibiting discrimination on basis of gender and protecting disabled families and children. And whereas in order for the Fair Housing Act to be effective and prohibiting discrimination, it requires vigilance and continuing cooperation at all levels of government, the real estate and homebuilding industries, banks, and lending assistance, and landlords and citizens. And whereas to outmar on this spirit of cooperation being provided through the efforts of the state, federal, and local governments, and with the support of many community and nonprofit organizations. And whereas promoting equal housing opportunities is essential to our goal in promoting non-discriminatory acts and arteries of light for all of our citizens. Now therefore, we, the mayor, commission that the town of Elton, New York, like, proclaimed April 2011 as a fair housing month.
We have a motion to accept the proclamation.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I don't have anything. Mary Jo?
I don't have anything, Tom.
Joe?
Just to bring everybody up to par on the recreation situation, there are several property owners that have come to the town to, to help support or give proposals to identify some sites that we may not know about in the town of Elton. I've directed them towards Jeannie, so that Jeannie can do some floor, floorwork to find out whether or not the property's going to be accessible for the town to use. And then, once they do that, they ask them to put together a package or something to bring to the board's consideration for whether or not we want to pick those sites. So right now, there's been about five different areas that have been identified. Just to put the record, before we go looking at one or two different places, we, we have some options. So.
That's good.
Again, that's something that we as the board are going to have to decide where we want to locate the recreation center. Other thing is, I went over to Delaware, and I was really impressed with the, pardon, pump it up place. Real nice little facility for the kids to be able to, it's a moneymaker, really. It's just a building that's just a, with moon bounces, and it's a party room, continuously moneymaking. And it's a good thing for the town to look into as part of the recreation. But that's, again, for the board to decide. Then we've got this letter from out at Hansworth Manor, about, from Mr. Stanley, as everybody on the board. I went by there yesterday to visit the property, and the place wasn't messing, but I want to thank DPW. They went by and touched up the patchwork. The thing that was towed was, it's got to be put in the budget. And I don't think, I'm just saying, I don't think something that is a safety hazard or something that affects the town's roadway should be something that's towed, that it's, it's in the budget or wasn't put in the budget. So I did make that statement. I don't know whether I'm wrong or right, but I'm just glad that DPW went by and took care of it. But we do need to take a look at that Hansworth Manor, the roads, and because it is.
I discussed it with Mr. Louis there, and he's taking a look, and maybe we can do a couple of roads out there, possibly.
Yeah, that road is really, really, it's almost like a copperstone road. It's so bad, and really deteriorating.
Um, I think.
You can do that.
I think that's all I have.
Okay. Charlie?
Earl, your points were taken, and I know we're all interested in getting some form of recreation. However, I think the board needs to make a determination exactly what kind of facility that you would like to have, and the amount of money that you do have. If somebody's talking about acres, how many acres would we actually need? I mean, somebody could come with 10, somebody could come with eight, somebody could come with six. Somebody who might give you six may not be accommodating for what we might want, but I guess we, as a group, need to decide exactly how much we need. That's, that's a future reference.
Make a comment on that. I included Mary McGol and Jeannie based on the old site plan, how much acreage we would need. In order to build the building, it would be eight acres, just for the building itself. If we wanted to include the fields, it would include another 12 acres. So I've asked, I've asked the people that have asked me about the recreation center. When I say me, remember, I'm not doing anything about the board. I want to make sure that they bring something so that they can at least offer us instead of just one or two different things. The things I've asked them to offer us was, what would it cost to construct a building with, on our land, with just the eight acres for the building? If you provided land, what kind of deal would you offer the town in order to help us out? And then a third thing is, what if you were to build off the site, what would be your proposal to offer the town some support or some assistance down for a 10 to 15 year? And again, the plan is based off of what was already submitted from Mary McGol. And things can be changed from the board's perspective or with their, their concerns, but it's just a layout, eight to 20 acres. And that's basically what I asked.
Yeah, and, and I agree with you, but I still say, we still need to determine what we're going to do, because basically, if you use the plans that we had before, obviously, when was the last time we discussed that? Because that cost, when, what year was it?
It's been a couple of years, at least.
Couple of years. But it needs to be consideration. Secondly, Lois, with the recycling plan, are the newsletters, did they go over that as planned?
No.
Town administrator?
They're going out this week.
Oh, they haven't gone out yet?
$4,900.
$4,900?
It takes a while putting together.
I, I, I understand that. Also, a mention in here was the recycling program, and that people can come and get a letter R?
No.
Well, why don't you, why don't you define that, so we all know?
It's a sticker that will provide for a charge that says recyclables on it.
Right.
And any citizen could, if they have a current trash container, two gallons or less, can come get it from the town, put it on a trash can, put the recyclables in.
That's the point I want to make. So if you get the R, it has to go over type of container?
It goes on like plastic man.
Could it be a tri-scan, or it could be anything that you have recyclable?
What you already have. Is that what you want to buy?
No. So what happens if I'm a trice collector, and Mr. Hicks and I was talking about that earlier, and you come by on a specific morning, you may have some recyclables in the bottom of the trice container, and you may have trice on top. Now, I guess that individual or the company would assume that they couldn't take that?
The.
So, so if it's marked R, then it specifically has to have?
Right. Waste management has been instructed, and they've been, with this whole program, to pick up containers that are marked recyclable, and have a letter R on them, or have the recyclable arrows. Those are the three symbols that they look for.
Right.
The recyclable sticker that we have ordered and will have to be a charge, very prominent to be easily distinguished by an operator with a hook when they pick it up, when they pick up on Thursdays and Fridays.
And so obviously, they've been instructed, and I assume it's the most appropriate, that only the R would be picked up on that non-pickup day?
Yes.
That's it.
Okay, just a couple of things concerning old business. I'd like to, again, you know, not to, not to beat a dead bush here. I just wanted, I did a little research as far as, you know, the processes and Robert's rules and all. And, and as a matter of record, I would like to point out that you basically cannot table something indefinitely. And that would be concerning the communication and the discussion of the proposed rental ordinance. So again, as a matter of record, I want to say that it cannot be tabled indefinitely. And the other comment I wanted to make on that is that, you know, we will also have workshops provided. There's so much of a topic throughout the state that we'll actually have workshops at the MML convention this year. So that definitely will be a subject that will be offered for, for everyone in attendance. And again, just to mention that there are several, many towns and cities within the state that already are participating in such ordinances and licenses and such. Monapolis, Bourbon Heights, Bowie, College Park, Avenue Grace, of course, Perryville, Ocean City, Princess Anne, just Salisbury, Rockville, just to, just to mention a few. I kind of stopped at around 31, but they're just, it's just a, such a hot topic that, you know, I just wanted to bring those up to everyone's attention. The other thing I'd like to talk about is the, I know we talked about this before, is the traffic light at the Elton School Athletic Fields. They're on 279, the crossing light, rather. I kind of got caught up in that light today, and I know we had some issues last season. The light is a little confusing, and I would really like to meet someone there or have us meet someone there to actually go through the cycle. What happens is that, once the button is pushed, the, the light then flashes rapidly. And after it flashes rapidly, it does the solid yellow again. And then after the solid yellow, it turns red. And it's just enough time to confuse the driver in order, if it's yellow and it's not a regular traffic light, you're going to assume to go forward, but then it turns red. So I really think we need to consider that, the way that that process works, because we have had issues there before. And I think we just needed to give it some more attention. Even chief, if it's possible, and again, this is only a suggestion, that during the, the times of practice, that there may be a unit out there just to help in some way. So I'm just not sure how, but to help in some way or fashion. So I would like for some consideration to be given to that, please. Also, chief, I would like to congratulate you guys for getting the K-9 unit in action. I know that was a lot of hard work coming forward, and I know our community is going to benefit from that greatly. So great job, and keep up the good work with that. The next thing I would kind of ask.
Before you, next thing, the traffic situation needs more than the Elton Police's attention, I think, maybe, who's responsible for 279, Lois?
State.
The signal there has been reviewed by the Maryland State Highway Administration, Office of Traffic and Safety. The sequence of operation there for the, or the flash in yellow to the solid yellow, and then to red, is the sequence of operations for a signal like that that's standardized throughout the state of Maryland. They will not adjust it any other way. I mean, I'll send a thing to the district engineer, and he can tell you that, but we've been down there. Much as it suits our stopping and safety, we standardize all those lights anyway. And that's, that's always be that way.
And then that's what I figured. I figured it's a standardized thing, but it, it just, it does create confusion, and we've already had issues there. So I really, I don't know what we can do, but I think, I feel compelled that we need to do something other than, or something, I'm not sure what, but we need to look into it.
The town, of course, obviously, incurs no liability for highways or users, highways of the state. So we're not compelled by, by anything to do it. And I can have the state engineer come down there, but he'll tell you, he'll tell you that's the standardized way they do things anywhere in Maryland, or Gare County or Maryland. It's a way of operating that.
Well, I tell you, I'd be glad, I'm sorry to keep talking. I'd be glad to talk to him myself, if, if it helps.
Saying I can, I can get a little married grid line. I'm not sure what your schedule is, because.
I'll make time. I've just, I've been, you know, not overwhelmed, but I've been asked a lot by different parents that are definitely concerned. And I myself have, have a child that goes there, so I've got some concern myself, of course.
Actually, the local people are probably the ones that you wouldn't expect to be concerned at all, because they know what it's going to do. They know it's going to flash, turn yellow, then red. It's people who've never been there that may be confused.
Parents of the kids that are concerned.
No, I mean, but if anybody operates a motor vehicle that's local.
Yes, they know.
How that operates every time.
They know.
It's always operating the same way.
You're right.
You know when it flashes, it's going to turn yellow and red, so nobody operating a motor vehicle will be. You know when it flashes, it's gonna turn yellow and red, so nobody operating a motor vehicle would be confused.
I tell you, I saw it, and the car, the car behind the car blew the horn, and I'm behind that car. And that car went through the yellow light right before it turned red. It went from flashing, and then it turned yellow, car behind it blew the horn, that car went through the light, turned red.
Sort of like green light sequence, the yellow blown through the yellow light, so it's a warning that the red light will come next.
I understand.
Turn red is standard in Maryland.
Right.
But I guess it would merit consideration, and also, when you contact that person, maybe they can also observe that light early in the morning when the kids are coming to school. Because school, Elton High School now opens a bit earlier. And there have been long lines out there on two seventy-nine because of more traffic, I guess both work and school traffic. You also have kids coming through pushing the button, the lights are flashed. So, you know, on James, on James Street, there's been long lines of traffic. As a matter of fact, we sometime average maybe twenty-five to thirty kids at a late school in the morning because they can't get through. And on Monday, I think there was a car broken down on two seventy-nine at Goplin Manor Elementary School, and that really made things in a jam. But, you know, it merits consideration, if you will, please.
Yeah, I'm gonna get a little Larry grid line.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, let's see. I've also been approached by different, different members of the community, and they're just asking questions. And that brings me up to to ask a question, propose a question. Is it possible that, for the sake of being more transparent to the community and the citizens, that the the Elton Alliance may in some way, shape, or form present some type of quarterly presentation to the board as to how the budget or expenditures are going as far as what they're doing downtown? I would like for that to be considered or be talked about, so. In that same fashion, as far as Fair Housing Month, I would also propose that the Elton Housing Authority also do some type of presentation of their state of department, or state of, state of what what they're going on, what's going on in their area as well as far as the town goes.
I guess prior to you coming on the board, the Elton Housing Authority, many moons ago, I don't know whether it's five, six, or seven years, they always came before the board and presented what was going on. If it's something that they did previously, it had stopped, but, you know, it's up to the board if they like it, correct? If you would like for that to continue again.
Yeah, I was thinking, at least during this time of the of the year, you know, when the proclamation is presented that they can come make a presentation. And the last thing, I guess, is that I would like to, you know, I'd like to thank the department for getting out the the letters or the public notices concerning the recyclables. And the letter specifically, the way it states how the town is, again, through this process, being frugal in trying to save the town money and still keep the amount of services provided. All right, thank you.
We'll keep getting our report, once we put this in motion, that we can find out if, how it's worked. I'm sure it's gonna take a few months to make sure everybody's on board with it. And then we get a report as far as our tonnage and see if, how we're doing.
I have a report called Cindy Osborne about presentation in board.
I was talking about the recyclable.
Oh, I was going to break it down, Cindy Osborne, recyclables.
Did you get my question?
Yeah, we need a report on recyclables.
Well, I know it's gonna take some time because we're just much initiated, but it's gonna take a while to get, find out how much, how much we're working and how much everybody's participating.
We'll be able to measure that in several ways. We'll monitor the tonnage to get paid for, to actually pay in literal terms, very quickly, how much weight we're receiving at the landfill versus, you know, before and after. And then the cost will be proportional to the amount of the tonnage that we pay for versus recycling, which is a lesser cost. We'll be able to do a pretty accurate financial reporting of that.
The bill's very detailed, in what is the guard weighs, what are tires, what are single-seated recyclables by date, so it's a very detailed, concrete bill that we get from the towns.
Okay.
Maybe prepare like, you know, like starting July, July, and see what's in the card.
Okay, good. Okay, Becky?
I have to sit down?
Yeah.
Why, Joe?
Oh, you don't wanna sit down?
No.
Oh, you can stand if you like.
Thank you.
I thought you missed it down.
Thank you. My name's Rebecca McKenney, I'm with the town of Elton, we're doing a lot with them, and I know they appreciate it, I appreciate them. Okay, I have a lot of problems here tonight. I visit a lot in Hollinhurst Manor. The roads are very bad. On road six at the end, where my cousin lives, on one sixty-one, the road is very bad, the school buses is very bad. There is no, a lot actually, the road needs repairing for where the school buses stop. Another situation is, on road six, we have a family at one fifty-three, one fifty-four, they rent from Scott Arrow. I have mentioned this a million, three thousand times, if not a few more. I mean, when Mr. Hicks wasn't here, I have. And I know he's done a lot for us when he was with the town. And I thank God for him and appreciate it. But we're not getting anything done publicly. I think, isn't Louis, isn't it still in the books that, in the town of Elton, that it's against the law to drink beer outside? Or did we pass that they can do that?
Hence where you're outside.
Louis.
If you're outside in your back porch, it's not against the law.
Louis.
If it's in the yard, it's not against the law, if it's on a public tree, it's against the law.
Louis, if they're out front and they have children, that's four, five, six, and seven. Definitely, I don't think that's right. Would you like to have your grandchildren standing there, playing in the yard across the street while they're standing there, filthing out and cussing and drinking beer on a daytime and on disability? Hello? We're paying the taxes for that.
No, that's a board rule. I'm saying set an example for you, I don't drink, I don't hurt.
Well, we do have, Louis, we do have an ordinance against that.
Thank you, Joe. Well, one fifty-three, we're having a lot of problems with it. One fifty-four, the houses has never been fixed up. Mr. Mr. Hicks broke this up a dozen times in the beaten, when he was working for the town. Nothing's ever been done with these houses for Scott Arrow, and it's not gonna be done. One twenty-seven is the rent, and one twenty-eight. Okay, one twenty-nine has at least thirty S P C, uh, souls, K nine, or what do you call them?
Pit bulls?
Pit bulls. Have children. Have a grandson, step-grandson, that walks down there to catch the bus. I'm not a mean person, you know that. But I can show you mean ways to be if somebody, one of the dogs get out and bite my step-grandson. You're gonna see McKenney all over that road, and a bunch of dead people laying there with it. I'm not sorry, I'm not gonna call Elton Police Department because I don't have time to dial nine-one-one when you're paying and I'm paying for them to have an office sat there, hello, I can't help you. You have to call nine-one-one. Well, don't be snotty like that, don't work.
Well, you know, what we can do, you get those addresses for us, and we'll have John.
I don't give you the address. One thirty-seven, one twenty-seven, one twenty-eight, one twenty-nine.
All right.
One thirty-seven, one thirty-six, these backyards cleaned up. Have an illegal van sitting out there with an illegal tag that was driven today and put on it, on a piece of cardboard, hello? That's illegal, it's not legal. It was in the yard for two months with no tags. One fifty-three, one fifty-four, Scott Arrow needs cleaning. One seventy-nine needs cleaning, Mr. Williams. Road thirteen, we have a white truck sitting down here on Water Street. I mentioned it to Mr. Hicks. Full of trash, the homeless are eating out of that truck. That truck was there for three weeks and a half. It belongs to road thirteen. A tag is still on that truck.
Do you know if it's a current tag?
Yes, well, I know, I don't know if it's current, it might be stolen. Might be stolen off somebody else's car to put on there, in front of Hollinhurst Manor, honey, you know that. Anyway, road fourteen, we have to do something about. Road four, if I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong, there's a car sitting in the house and yard on road four with no tags, with the fence around it. Okay, have no tags on it, period. I make a habit of going to Hollinhurst Manor three times a week. The only reason I make that habit is because I used to live there. And I had it cleaned up, did have it cleaned up. But now that I moved and don't live there, it's not cleaning. We have children, it's coming summertime. And I think we need the law to ride around there of the day, especially on road six. You're on the state, they're paying your rent. I'm not knocking nobody if they need help, you understand me? But if they can afford a can of beer that's this tall and stand there and drink three and four of them and smoke your goodies, then you know what, you don't need help from the state. Why take your money, my taxes, and waste them and everybody else that works here for something that we don't need to pay for, you understand me? So something has to be done. It's getting very, very bad and very nasty out there. We have a lot of people on road thirteen, road fourteen, and road fifteen selling drugs worse than what we did. Road five, and road three, and road one, just as bad. It needs to be cleaned up before summer. I beg you and I ask you, please see that it's done because I will personally be out there and I have a cell phone and I will call the state police, I will call that one, and they will move fast. The state moves much faster than I do.
Louis, can we have John Smith take a look at some of those areas, please? Lee Lawson?
I'll have a little more comment tonight, sir.
Oh, okay. Wes?
I'm also on the agenda.
I see, yeah. Dee?
Speak together.
Yeah, okay.
She speaks more elegantly than me.
All right.
This is just mainly to keep the town informed and also ask a couple of questions that we have with the Memorial Day Parade coming up. One of them is maybe directed to some guidance from Mary Jo with placing of the no parking signs. I know during the Fall Fest, you do that, is that something we would do?
We do it, yes.
We, meaning?
The Alliance usually does it for the events.
Oh, okay, for all the events, okay.
Yeah, if you were doing the event, you would make the signs and, okay, with the police and the public works and the mayor, well, not, you already have the okay from the mayor, so.
And then do we place them out?
Yeah.
Day of the event?
Twenty-four hours ahead of time.
Just to clarify, we place them or Alliance places them?
Well, whoever's running the event.
Right, right.
I mean, you haven't been in yet to ask for anything, so.
Right, right. Yeah, we're seeing Larry tomorrow.
And when, when will the town shut down the streets?
That all goes through Larry Walters when you get your permit. When you sit with, have you gotten your permits yet for the streets?
No, we're sitting tomorrow with him.
Okay, because that, once he takes care of all that, on the timing of shutting down the street, it's all in the permit that has to go to state highway to get the okay for that.
Is also the signage in there? Like if you wanted to place a sign across Main Street like they do in Northeastus or any way?
You can't use the poles, the electric company will not let you. So that's why you can't do, if you had permission from a building to a building, but it has to be higher than the tractor trailers, so you also, you have to look into that also.
And would that go through Craig Church?
That's because Craig for the banners for signage.
And then, as far as asking, would it be marked through D P W? For like if we asked to borrow the stage, like you do have for the Fall Fest, would that go through Mark for any requests?
Yeah, it has to go through, through Mark. Get the stage.
Usually tell Louis what you need.
Yeah, he can get somebody.
He gets to the departments that need it.
So that would also be the trash cans? I know the trash cans you have out there, but in case they're gonna put any extra?
Any questions you have about the stage or trash or things like that, that's non-law enforcement, send them through me and I'll coordinate that with Elton Works. Any law enforcement issues, including parking signs, anything like that, should go through Larry Walters.
So to use Meadow Park like for that day, is there a sign-up roster, anything like the Cecil Soccer League or lacrosse uses it?
Goes through Marion McCall.
That's Marion. And then if we wanted to place porta-pots anywhere, with just two of them out there, just let you know where we'd like to place two porta-pots?
Where are you gonna put them?
We were thinking maybe along the line, a couple of restaurants will be open downtown, so we can use those. Maybe one down by.
On the public sidewalk?
No, no, no. No, the restaurants will be open, we'll use those restaurants for restrooms.
Okay.
And then we'll put one maybe down by.
I would check with the restaurants because they don't want people off the street going in there unless they're sitting in the restaurant having something to eat.
Yeah.
Don't depend on that. Just, just caution.
Yeah.
That's true, they don't wanna.
Well, and most of them have signs that say, you know, it's not, it's not a public restroom, it's.
Yeah. And then down there where the firefighters' challenge was, are we gonna put one down there?
Yeah, that's our street for the month.
And then maybe one up by the senior center, one fifty East Main, somewhere around there.
I'm not sure, I don't have fire yet there, so.
If I would, I would suggest you waiting till you talk with Larry Walters to see what streets you're gonna be able to use and where you get the closures, and then go to where the porta-potties are and that, because he makes those determinations first.
I agree, that's what I'm discussing.
So I would suggest to do all that after your meeting with the county manager.
I think most of the stuff you might need with better, better set to go through Louis, let him know and give you a list of things that you might need or so, and that he can coordinate that all with you. Needs you that way. Do you know how many units you got yet?
What's that?
How many units you got coming?
Participants, like twenty-nine or thirty, from March Abeyance, Mr. McCullough up there at the Elton Heights. McCullough, I think.
McCullough.
And then there's a lady that's doing the steppers, Miss Suddler.
Nicole.
And there's some bagpipes and Civil War reenactments, and there's, there's a lot. Louis, what's your email that to you?
Louis dot wood at elton dot wood.
I know this is, you're trying to start something, but have you contacted the school saying, we're having a Memorial Day Parade and you might wanna have a group or something in there so they can advertise themselves or something like that?
We did, and one thing we didn't wanna do was take away from the veterans themselves. So the county's also providing some buses for us for transportation for some vets down at the VA Hospital. The only thing with that is some of the vets are, have dependencies, so they have to have counselors come with them as well. So it's gonna be a little tight. We're talking with the county about putting up a tent in their property, I think it's their property, where they have the garden, so some veterans can sit there and watch in the shade. watch in the shade. Fire companies participating in Elton, uh, Chesapeake City, Axapoint, they're getting now units from in the area, outside area to cover for them for when they're in the parade.
Do you have a, are you gonna have a rain date or is it gonna be rain or shine?
It's not been raining that day.
Oh, so, yeah.
Whatever you can do, help that looking rain.
We'll draw up a resolution, prevent the rain. Okay? All right, all right. Marshall?
I just wanted to give you an update on the JC Carnival, which is going to take place May seventeenth through twenty-second, up on Route Forty and Northeast. We did secure a site. I invite all of you to come out and see the wonderful show we're going to put on. Um, we're really looking forward to, it's a great event, letting you guys see, um, how well-run it is. Uh, come out, enjoy the week with us. Uh, it, it's a very well-run carnival, it will bring, uh, money to the community, all of the, um, best businesses around there. These people come to town and they'll spend twenty, thirty thousand dollars, these people, that's where they live, it's what they do, they use our stores, they use our facilities, they shop at Walmart, they eat in the restaurants, they buy groceries, they wash their clothes, they fill their cars with gas. So it would be a great opportunity for you all to come out and see the grade A operation that we put on and we invite you to allow us to be in Elton in the future. So do you have any questions about what's going on with the carnival or anything else?
I think the media gave you a, a little write-up, Ben, with the Cecil Week and, uh, that was good.
Yes.
Nice.
It's really helping. So we're looking to bring in other community organizations as usual. We always try and partner with as many community organizations as we can and we've been working very hard and we're very proud of our work and we're looking for a very successful project.
Good, very good.
Sure, it always has been a new path.
Thank you.
Very good.
Up to date.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
What are your hours? What, what will your hours be?
It will run Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday from six PM until ten PM, Friday from six PM until eleven PM, Saturday from two PM until eleven PM and Sunday from two PM until six or eight, that one's not definite. So they open a little later than typically we have in the past, but that's how they like to do it.
Okay, thank you.
If you're looking to volunteer, you give me a call, I'll pick you up.
That's it, so do I have a motion to?
I have a question, just one question for clarification. Earl, when you mentioned eight acres, do you mean acre, eight, eight acres of building or eight acres of land?
Eight acres of land.
Land, okay, 'cause I misunderstood what you said. I was gonna say General Cable's building is six acres and that's a big piece, a big building.
I have a flyer package that you'll get.
Oh, okay, great.
Then also, we're trying to secure vehicles for the board to be and I didn't know who would be here and who wouldn't be if anyone made plans to be here.
I'll just get a bus and stick everybody on there.
You'll sit on top of the bus.
I don't know someone with a trolley now.
There we go, we get the trolley.
Yeah, trolley.
Very good, okay. All righty, our motion adjourned.
Before I make a motion, also I'd like to thank the Elton Alliance for the Citizen of the Year with Charlie McCoy, it was done well, so congratulations to, to those individuals and with that, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Have a second?
Sir?
Favor?
I have a-
Medium adjourn.